Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order of the council meeting for December 3rd, 2018. Please stand for invocation, which are your bodies here, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Bobby.
I'm not sure if it's appropriate now, but I just feel like we need to take time to remember one of our community's persons, and Wayne Stotman, all the persons who passed this last week. Just, if you don't mind, let's have a moment of silence in memory of those two persons who lost their lives, those three persons, I should say. Father God, we come to you. We don't always understand why things happen and what goes on, God, but we know one thing we do know: we trust you. And we trust you, God, to continue to watch over us and be with us, God, and continue to help us to get through the days. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, for this council. We thank you for all the hard work that they do, the time that they put in and the time they give up from their families to try to make our community a better place to live. We thank you, God, for all of our staff persons that work for this community and work for the city of Jeffersonville. We thank you, God, for our first responders. We thank you, God, for all of the persons who are present today at this council meeting that care enough about this city and about our community to be here to understand what's going on. God, we ask you to continue to watch over us during this holiday season. God, help us to understand you are the reason for the season. And, God, we ask you also, Lord, to continue to help us to appreciate each day. God, we never know if we're going to have another day, but we thank you, God, for this day. And we ask you, God, to be with this meeting, to help us to come together and let the things be done as pleasing to our sight. We ask in all the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bobby. Have a roll call, please. Councilperson White.
Present.
Councilperson Stotney.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Daniel.
Here.
Let the record reflect that we are here seven. Councilmembers of the President's chair absent. Thank you. And Scotty did let us know that he's out of town for training and Callie's out of town for her job this week. So I have minutes to be approved for our council regular proceedings of November 19th, 2019. If there's not any questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I need the approval of the agenda, but I need the approval of agenda with removal of number nine under old business. That is being removed because that will be addressed in the zone that will come up in the new business, which is actually number 19 on our agenda. So I want your motion to reflect that, please.
Motion to approve less item number nine? Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the removal of number nine under old business. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Claims to be approved. Civil City, which for the public, we do have claims tonight for Civil City, which is $6,177,645.93, but Heather's ready to go. A lot of its transfers and appropriating money, so don't get sick of shock.
Yes, it still stays within the city. It's just moving to different funds. On page one, the 2.2 million is going towards the Chapel Lake new fund when approved tonight on the third reading for that fund. Page two has 1.5 going towards the health insurance, $750,000 going towards the Eighth Street Storm Sewer Separation Fund. Page four has $69,000 going towards the fuel fund. And then I have one more. I have page nine, $750,000 going towards the Eighth Street Storm Sewer Separation Fund.
What page is that?
Nine.
Nine.
That's all in the Civil City account.
And just so the council knows, the claims under the city council, other than the one that the transfer's out or the appropriation of that, I did submit those claims. She finally took the time off last week, so just to let you all know that I did do that.
Heather, are all these in order?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the claims of $6,177,645.93. Is there any further discussion or comments?
There is 2.2 on page one. There's another, when we get to Parks, there's another 700 there on page two. And then there's another 700 that comes from redevelopment. That was not something that moves.
And that was appropriated to our last, out of our last meeting?
Yes.
So all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, which leads us to Parks.
Parks is $732,770.79.
All claims are in order.
Yes.
And keep in mind that she already touched on that transfer out on Park, so. If any questions or comments, now I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the Parks claim of $732,770.79. All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a report of the clerk?
None.
Okay. Moving on to old business. We've removed number nine. We'll go to number 10, what Merkley, the 2018 OR 73 ordinance establishing Mount of Burden Fund, passed in first and second. Anything changed?
No.
I will entertain a third and final.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 73 in third and final. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Move on to new business. We have Sean Grant with Justiceville Fire Department here to talk to us about it. Equipment purchase order from the Lloyd Fund, 2020. Good evening.
Thank you, guys. I have spoken with a couple of you guys last week about the purchase of our next fire apparatus, and what I'd like to do is get permission to start the process. Payment will be due in 2020. The last payment from the last apparatus will be in July, so customarily, we come to you guys in a year, when we're close to about a year out, to get permission to proceed with the next process, which will be Board of Public Works and then putting the next apparatus under contract.
Takes a year to, that's why he's asking, and it will be turnkey ready?
Yes. So we're about, almost a year out, so we have to put the order in now in order to save the, keep us from the 3% increase from next year.
Basically, in that 14 months, they put their truck committee together, they do it at spec.
Yes.
Go to the factory, go over everything with the builder. The builder puts the design together, they put it together, they go back and do another inspection. It's a very long, drawn-out process.
Yes.
Comes to these custom fire trucks.
But I have to get a contract before I can proceed with any of that, so I have to get permission from you guys and then take it through the Board of Public Works and then start the process.
And while we're on this subject, being that there's a motion made and it is passed, I know dealing with Pierce before, when I was president, I need, just so there's the council, did you give me that go-ahead, a letter from the president also stating it was okay to go and go ahead?
Yes.
So if you do need that, I just want the council to know that if this does indeed pass to go ahead, that if they give me the authority to go ahead and do that.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Sean, just, I've asked you this, but I want to ask it publicly. By doing it this way, there's not, won't be any additional request for dollars above Watts?
No.
What's kind of earmarked and with in line, with Watts in line with the bond amount of the payment, right?
No, no more, no more increase. Thank you.
So basically, the...
What you guys are already providing is the...
We're going to structure a financing deal that'll be the same, within the same dollar amount that we're used to.
Yes.
So if you all have any further questions or other, I will entertain a...
Make a motion to approve?
So moved.
I got a, just to be clear, I got a motion and a second to approve, to give him the go-ahead to...
Start the process.
Start the process. So are there any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Did you have anything else?
No. We're all good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Les, you have an ordinance changing the zoning map destination of certain tract of property that's located at the 4,600 of Charles Town Pike.
Yes. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation. There is a contingency on that recommendation. That recommendation was contingent upon the developer...
Four houses per acre.
Yes. To a commitment, a written commitment to be recorded with the property that there would be no more than four houses per acre. The request is to rezone this from A1 agricultural to R3 old city residential. And the reason why it's R3 as opposed to R2, because R3 would allow more than four per acre, and that's not the intent or the desire of the developer to do that. They want to stick to the four per acre. But if we went with an R2, we would have to have several variances and waivers from both the BZA and the Planning Commission for them to be able to build on the smaller lots. So by going R3, they avoid having to do that. The other option is they could have done a PUD, but that's a lot more expensive to do that on the developer's part and also much more time-consuming for our staff internally. So the thought was do R3 with a written zoning commitment not to exceed four per acre. And I believe there is representative here from the developer, which is Greg Linder and David Miller. If the council has any questions, otherwise this is a public hearing.
Do we have an ordinance number 74? Yes, it's 74. And a real quick, I need a copy of the recommendation for the ordinance. So do you all have any questions or any, did you say a representative was here?
Yes.
Do you all counsel it before I open up the public hearing? Okay. At this time, I'm going to officially open up the public hearing for the zoning change for the property located at 4,600 Charles Town Pike, going from Exhibit A, which is an A1 agricultural, to an R3, which is old city residential with the only four housings per acre. Is there anybody here wish to speak for or against it? Please come up, speak your name and address for the record. Seeing none, officially closed public hearing. And if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to pass OR 74, contingent upon the no more than four acre...
Contingent?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 74 with that contingency. Is there any further discussion, comment?
I'm going to support this, although I do not agree that we should have added a contingency at the commission level or on the council level. I think we have some quotes that speak for themselves and want certainty in the business sector. And people, investors decide to come and develop in the cities, and with that uncertainty, then that may discourage future investors. I think we should stand by the coast of past and watch it adjust, and we should do that.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Les. I think, actually, you're going to handle this one.
Yes.
The interlocal agreement for the joint use of operation of the Jeffersonville Clark County Animal Shelter.
Our current agreement, the interlocal agreement we have with the county and the various other entities in the county, provide animal control services in the use of the animal shelter, has expired. We need to renew that. What you have in front of you is a resolution that approves that interlocal agreement is basically identical to what we currently have. Dollar amounts are the same. We did make some clarifications, but nothing of any substance has changed. We just feel that, obviously, we need a written agreement, and assuming you all, the council passes this, we will forward on to the other entities.
I'm assuming you, the other entities are going to be doing this again, as far as you know?
As far as I know, yes. I mean, we have many changes to this agreement, so I wouldn't be surprised if...
I mean, nobody's told you express...
No.
I think once we, we'll find out, once we pass it, then it goes on to all the other entities, and then it goes back to the...
The option was either send it to them and then for it to come back to you all, it seemed like it made more sense for you all to pass it and then send it on to them.
Bless, I see percentage amounts, which equates to dollar amounts on here. How is this determined? Do we take our annual budget and then apply these percentages, or are these, are they the same as they've always been?
This is the same as, the dollar amounts are in there, it's the same, it's in the current agreement.
Okay. And I'm supportive of this, but should we, should we upgrade, update that to current costs? Because...
That would be a question for Sarah. I don't think she...
Bless, one of the things that I've heard a lot of talk about us needing a new animal shelter, that the one that we have is not sufficient. Would these other entities pay a portion of the cost of the new animal shelter, or would it all be just like...
Right now redevelopment is, redevelopment is footing the bill for the new animal shelter.
Any other questions?
I have a question. These, these amounts, percentages, last year did everybody pay their fair share, or did anybody not pay?
Really, a couple of the small ones.
I think three or four half out of the six that you dropped.
Six.
I believe the lowest two did not, but I'm not, I'm not asking the hospital on that right now.
Just curious if, you know, if they're paying their fair share, so thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll move.
Draw a second.
It's 2018 OR 12.
Oh, second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to pass the, an interlocal agreement of 2018 OR 12. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I think, Les, you're handling this next one as well. It's the resolution approving and ratifying interlocal cooperation agreement for the joint use and operations of the Jeffersonville Clark County Animal Shelter.
We just did that, so we sort of lumped them together.
Yeah.
The resolution, you adopted the resolution that approved it.
Okay, that's, I got you. I apologize. I see what. So we move down to the ordinance of additional appropriation. This will be 2018 OR 75, is that correct?
This one carries.
Yes.
It's for land acquisition. This is the one that we'll discuss earlier that would need to be approved on all three readings.
Is this public hearing?
Yes.
Does anybody have anything? I'm going to go ahead and open up public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for this additional appropriation, which I believe that you see is behind us. It's for the general board land for 210,500. Does anybody here wish to speak for or against this? Please come forth, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, officially closed public hearing. And this is where we're being asked to suspend the rules because there's a time date on this, so will somebody please make that motion?
Motion to suspend the rules in anticipation of passing on all three readings.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules and pass on all three readings, anticipation is passed in 2018 OR 75. All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion does carry, because we need an anonymous approval for that, so I will entertain a motion to go ahead and pass this on all three.
Motion to pass 2018 OR 75 on all three readings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 75 on all three. Is there any further comment or question? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Now, any a motion for the claim? For your claim document?
Can I go ahead and get that motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to approve the claim on the docket. All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So now we have an ordinance addition appropriation, which the public carries. This one will be December 17th. That are you have the floor?
Yes, this is an internal fund. That's why this one can take a little bit longer than the other. And this is just appropriating the cash that you just approved to be transferred into that new fund.
It's ordinance number 2018 OR 76. So if there's no question, comment, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. In the first and second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 76 in the first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Les, we have an ordinance amending the Justiceville zoning code, 2000 OR 61, for purpose of establishing regulations for non-commercial livestock.
Yes. Everyone's favorite topic, chickens and roosters. As you, as you recall, and you removed it earlier from the agenda, there was an ordinance. Basically, that ordinance was to amend the animal control ordinance to address the issue of what I consider non-commercial livestock, also chickens and fowl and so, so forth. I did some research, and it seems like a lot, lot, if not most communities deal with this under the zoning code, which is where it used to be for the city of Jeffersonville, but at some point, something changed along the way. So this, what you have in front of you is, is an ordinance that would amend our current zoning code to basically include a new developmental standard under our code, specifically under Article 14. Well, Article 14 would be the definitions, but the substantive portion of the ordinance would create a new section under Article 7, would create a 7.28 entitled Non-Commercial Livestock Standards, LS. And as you can see, also, under Article 4, we would include some new definitions that would be necessary for implementation of the new Article 7.28. First of all, this does not apply to anything that's currently zoned agriculture, so if it's agriculture, if it's A1, this does not apply. They can do whatever they want to do. This applies specifically to the residential districts R1, R2, and R3, and limits the use or the keeping, obviously, if someone's grandfathered in, their grandfathered in, this will not apply. Moving forward, it limits, basically categorizes as large animals and small animals, sort of is, relates to the lot size. For example, large animals, which would be livestock of bovine, equine, swine, sheep, or camel families, shall be permitted at a density of one animal for each 15,000 square feet of lot area used. And then we have small animals, which would be in excess of four total, chickens, fowl, game, birds, rabbits, and any other animal which is sized by, and of nature, of similar character to the aforementioned animals, would be permitted at a density of one per 1,000 square feet of gross lot area. And also, we've also put in some setback requirements regarding location of coops and so forth and other livestock apparatus to try to make sure that they're not on top of other property owners or on the neighbors.
A good portion of this was already in our zoning before, and then we thought we're going to have an ordinance to combine everything in one, and that did so. A lot of this was put back into the zoning.
I will point out that this is, I looked at some model ordinances, that's where this comes from. You will look under H, regulation specific to chickens. It says roosters are not permitted. I just put that in there because I'm not taking a side on the rooster, non-rooster debate, and that was just what was in the model ordinance side.
This is an anti...
We'll leave all fowl to be treated equally. Now, obviously, this would also give an opportunity for anyone to also apply for a variance if they want to, and they would go before the BZA, and you have a public hearing, and you can get a variance from these standards, just like we allow anyone to do from any developmental standards, whether it be a setback or whatever.
And I think that was kind of a compromise in the first, where should you take it to where they have means, if they want them, they could have an avenue to go after that for everything.
What happens to the, the ordinance that, that was number nine above? We removed it from the agenda, but it's had a first and second reading. Do we need to vote that down?
I think to clean up your, to clean it up for the clerks, for the purposes of the clerk, you probably need to do that. But I didn't, I didn't want you to vote that down until we knew what direction...
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
I get it. Because I didn't know, maybe you wanted to go back in that direction, or maybe you just wanted to just vote this down and whatever happens, I don't...
Just for sake of the public understanding, we, if we approve this, amend this, it has to go back to the planning and zoning.
Yeah, all you're doing right now, because under state statute, the city council can initiate an amendment to our zoning code. When that happens, it's introduced by the council and then it's referred, so it would be a motion and second to refer it to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would go through what it does anytime, they'll have public hearings and notices and so forth. And then if they, then they will send it back to you with either a favorable, unfavorable, or no recommendation, and at that time, you will get to consider this again. This is the first step in the process.
It seems to me that we have enforcement officers in planning and zoning. We don't really have enforcement officers in our animal control, do we? I know they, Sarah winds up probably being that enforcement officer when she gets called out, but it seems like going back to how it used to be makes, makes sense, and there's a recourse for people.
Obviously, if, if the animal control ordinance or the animal control officers would still play a role if there was mistreatment of animals or anything like that, that would violate our ordinance, but for purposes of just land use, they would not, you know, this is just, to me, a land use issue as opposed to an animal control issue. And I, you know, like I said, if the model ordinance did not allow for roosters, the four, the number four regarding the chickens and the rabbits and so forth, that came from the model ordinance as well. They ranged anywhere from, like, I think, three to six.
Make a motion to approve 2018 OR 77 on first and second reading.
No, you're going to make a motion to refer it to Planning Commission.
That's what I meant to say.
Okay. I've got...
Yeah, if you all refer, then it's, I mean, it doesn't, it's over.
So we have a motion and a second, to be clear, for 2018 OR 77, the amendment to be referred to the Planning Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. So since that did pass, we need to go back and, since we have, we do things in the affirmative, go ahead and entertain a motion for 2018 OR 67, the patent in anticipation of its failure.
We removed that from the agenda.
Yes.
This goes away.
I think you probably ought to vote it down. I think, I mean, I'll defer...
Wait till they do whatever they're going to do on this end, or could you just go right in the center?
Okay.
Does that make sense? With zoning, when they do what they're...
No problem, they'll do that.
So I need to basically table this, so instead of, even though you remove it, can somebody make a motion to table it again, I guess?
Yeah, you might want to say table it, so she doesn't have to keep putting it back on, table it until... Or this ordinance is placed back, the one that was just referred to the Planning Commission is back in front of you all.
Was the motion not to remove it from the agenda? Wouldn't that suffice until it's reintroduced?
Yeah, I thought we would remove it, and if we needed... Yeah, I thought we would remove it and if we needed to back to vote it down, whatever we had.
I think if you remove it, I mean, I gotta defer to the clerk. I mean, I...
That's from tonight's meeting. That's, that's how I interpret it.
Yeah.
We were removing it from tonight. Same as tabling is how I interpret it. May not be...
But tabling, she has to keep putting it on, putting it on, putting it on. And when it's all done, we can put it back on and vote it down.
Well, we'll have to start off with a new number. If you remove it, if you want to totally remove it, then it's, the number's going to die.
Or you could just table it and say we're going to, this is going to be tabled until whatever, what was the number we just had of the one that...
Seventy-seven.
Until seventy-seven is, comes back in front of the council. So then, when that one's placed on the...
January.
Yeah, or whenever they, yeah. So then you...
It'd be better just to start off clean.
I mean, it's up to you all. I don't care. Just let me know because I'm...
Or, yeah, or you could just vote 2018 OR 67 down and...
Do we have the ability to bring it back up tonight? So we cannot remove it, we can table it?
Already.
Already removed it in the...
Okay. I thought we did that once before where we had our president brought up a vote, made the motion to, no?
Okay.
Don't lose some plaid this time.
Oh, I got you.
Make sure there's no foul play.
Ah ha, pum pum.
I'm just trying to avoid that the clerk has to put this on every meeting between now and January.
I do think, I do think it's good if we got something that's had a first and second reading to either vote it up or down. Rather, if you just remove it, it feels like it's not, we never resolved it. And that's why, I mean, maybe that's not...
No, you're right. I mean, it's...
So however we do that, I would prefer, but it doesn't matter. Suspend the rules? Agree to break that?
Go ahead. Are you saying some, guys?
If you want, if you...
These poor chickens and roosters, leave them. They just won't go away.
I guess what I was thinking was this, if there's an expectation that this zoning matter is going to resolve this ordinance issue, then if you have taken it off your agenda tonight and that you have the opportunity of not, you're already passed on two readings.
Right.
So if you put it back on in January, because suddenly you have to act on it, then you've already passed on two readings and you can vote on the third. If you eliminate it, have to start over, and then you gotta go back through readings and all of that. I mean, this seems like logically you...
Let's, let's just put it on next, our next meeting in December here and then we'll just, we'll just deal with it there. We remove it tonight, we'll put it back on, done. I'll move forward. Is that good?
Man, you're hot.
All right, let's go. We have, Les, an ordinance transferring dormant funds?
Wait a minute, I have a quick question. So with seventy-seven, is this just one reading? How are we going to do it?
The new one?
Yeah, it's a referral.
After it comes back, after it comes back from planning commission, it'll be one reading.
Okay. What do we, what do I do with this?
Just hold on to it.
Okay.
Just hold on to it. And then once planning commission makes a recommendation, you put it back on the agenda.
I just wanted to know because I got, I'm going to put it on here, so, okay.
It'll be just like when planning commission, it'd be like any other zoning ordinance, then it'll...
I just didn't know if we have to send it back to them or anything yet.
You don't, you don't, oh...
Okay, I'm going to put recording planning.
Because planning does not, they do not meet in December, so they will not meet again until January.
So, before we move on, in case anybody's interested, I did the, the mat and the, the density restrictions are one for large animals, one animal for every third of an acre, so three per acre. And then the small animals are one per thousand square feet, which is two tenths of an acre. In case you were wondering.
Okay, thank you.
Now can we move on? All right.
I can't, I miss...
The ordinance transferring the dormant funds?
Yes, this is, my understanding, we have three funds that have no activity or unused funds to be in them. We need to transfer those either to the, to the general fund or the rainy day fund. They are Fund 203, the street department non-reverting fund, and then a Fund 207, which is the fire department non-reverting fund, Fund Number 218, the city engineering non-reverting fund. And 207 and 218, they would transfer to the general fund. It looks like 203, the street department non-reverting fund, there's no money in there. Nothing, there's nothing to, nothing to transfer.
Just kind of cleaning up some miscellaneous non-reverting funds that are on the...
Just to make the accountants happy.
Yeah, well, and she also, she also included her, her conversation with state board of accounts, your correspondence, they're not a conversation, but yes, so, okay.
Seventy-six or seventy-seven?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight? Yeah, that's right.
That's what you mentioned.
Motion to approve 2018 OR 78 on first and second reading. Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2018 OR 78 in a first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Do we have a council attorney report tonight?
I have nothing.
Okay. I think Heather, you, something you need to address?
So the audit that was done in, for 2014 and 15 was a couple of years ago. They found an issue which I'm sure some, most of you hopefully are aware, but in 2006, the fire pension for the pensioners was calculated incorrectly. And then every year they get a COLA rate on top of that. So since it started incorrectly in 2006, it carried forward for 10 years or so. We had to go back to the pensioners to try and, some of them were underpaid, some of them were overpaid, so we had to make everyone whole, in the city whole for where it needed to be. Unfortunately, there were four people that were deceased and obviously can't necessarily get the overpayment back from them. We did get approval from board of accounts that we could do a one-time transfer from the general fund, but it needs to be approved by the council. And it's for $2,266.59. So I'm asking for your approval for that.
Say that one more time, $2,000 more? So were there overpayments made that were recouped?
Yes, there were.
Yeah, the ones that weren't...
I believe there were a list of probably 25 people. Some of them were over, some of them were under.
So would there...
Majority was over.
Was there, was there a mechanism for the city to have compensated the pension plan for those that overpaid or that were overpaid?
No, it's not, it's not. At the time that they did the audit for us, they told us that it was not a legal expense from our city funds. It would need to be reimbursed by the pensioner. And then now that they've done the 15 and 16, or 16 and 17 audit, they've just now, since this is still an outstanding issue, that we can't necessarily get the money from these people. So they have to, you know, bring back reoccurring issues. We got the one-time approval that we can do this for just these four deceased pensioners and whatever.
Well, I absolutely disagree with the fact that we couldn't take care of the overpayment that was paid out to the pensioners. It wasn't the pensioner that made the mistake.
Correct.
It was...
It was the pension secretary.
Right.
At the time.
And for those retirees to, to have to pay out of pocket for that mistake, I think is unacceptable. I understand your position that state law is state law, but I think, I just, I think that's absolutely ridiculous. But I would happily make a motion to approve the, the dollar amount.
We fought very much for that to happen.
Okay.
So that was not an intention of ours at all. But at the time that this was happening, they said do everything you can to get it from the other people.
I understand.
So if I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the dollar amount of $2,266.59. All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Did we have any public comments tonight?
There was Mr. Applegate, but he has been asked to remain secret.
Really?
He's a bunch of bull.
We're talking about chickens.
All right. So then we move on to council comments. Councilperson White.
Happy Hanukkah. What's on?
Councilperson is done.
No comment.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Councilpeople that may not know, the Jeffersonville promise was passed by the redevelopment commission. Feedback from that, me being in the school building every day, has been quite positive. I, I would like to reiterate, if you need to know details about it, we can go into details later. But I want to, this may come across in the wrong way, but this is not a charity. This was an investment that I, as being a member of the redevelopment commission, thought that we will get our money back on many times over by the time it is all said and done. This is providing a Ivy Tech education to any student that graduates Jeffersonville High School. I think there are a few little things that need to be tweaked with it, as anything that started by a government entity. But this is going to not only have an emotional response from people, this is going to pay back the city many times over in higher assessed values from businesses because they'll have people higher low at taxes because people won't have a $12 an hour job, they'll have a $25 an hour job. This is one of the best things, if not the best things, I've been a part of since I've been a part of the city government. So if you have any questions about it, please feel free to hit me up. It is not perfect. I don't think it is perfect yet. There are a few things that I'm, that I'm bringing up with redevelopment commission, but it is a fantastic step in the right direction. I'd like to be a part of it. That's it.
Councilperson Owen.
Just to reiterate, Councilman Hawkins said this was done up in Michigan in a city called Kalamazoo in 2006. In 2016, they had a 10-year review and they found that it was a four and a half percent return on their investment for the...
Four and a half times return. About four and a half percent.
It was four and a half times?
Times.
I thought it was, I misunderstood then. Thank you for that correction. But this is not, I want, just, there have been a couple of questions since the announcement last week. We'll reiterate that this is a, this is a donation for a semi-endowment, if you will, at Ivy Tech that will be managed by the Ivy Tech Foundation. There's no ongoing commitment or, or attachment to, you know, the city taxpayers for any type of, of ongoing commitment, if you will. This is just going to be a, a commitment that's paid over five years and then, you know, they'll get to manage those, those assets and fulfill Jeffersonville's promise with that. That's all.
Councilperson Ellis?
Nothing.
Councilperson Samuel?
I'd like to reiterate what Bobby Campbell said about Wayne Mustopanaw and the pilot and the other person in the plane. That was a tragic accident and loss. And I know the impact in our city will continue to be felt because a lot of our buildings and a lot of the design work was done through Wayne Mustopanaw and it could be missed.
Yeah, and I wanted to thank Bobby again for, I mean, you're always doing the invocation and you do it so well, but taking that moment of silence because, you know, the loss of those three and, I know a lot of focus was on the loss that we had and somebody contributed a lot to the community, that it was such a tragic loss. But we do, I do appreciate you every meeting doing the invocation and doing that for us. So if nobody has anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Meeting is adjourned.